Next item.
Hold on, you caught me off card. Next. David, did you want to do commendations next? Were you prepared?
Superman.
All right, in the business, this is called the cold read because I am just looking at it. I see them and send them over to Katie and she does a fabulous job with them, so here we go. Commendations to Fatimi Faraj, Executive Director of Student Achievement, and Hildai Rani, Director of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation, who are invited to present at a virtual conference session on Dearborn Schools' Continuous Improvement Plan within the My KIP platform. The event was attended for district and school leaders responsible for continuous improvement and accountability. My KIP is the state's Continuous Improvement Accountability System. Commendations to district staff involved in planning for the district to host the annual Michigan Association of School Board Awards Ceremony sponsored by Wayne County Association of School Boards.
Mr. Mustin, you're being asked to slow down for the interpreters. Gotcha. Thanks.
The event was held at Fortson High School on April 27th. Commendations to the following staff members for their efforts to ensure the event was a success. Mary Nagel, the BOS, Joe Coulter, Grounds, Todd McStein, engineer and custodians Jennifer Cruz, Mark Badaluka, Rick Neams, Linda Hamud, Tyler Saba, Mohammed Barry, Peter Clor, Mark Kilzalofis, Nick Rolick. And commendations as well to the following Fortson students who gave tours of the school to guests attending the event. Amira Abu-Mud, Adam Abdul-Jabba, Ayad Bazon, Gason Shahate, and Rhona Shami. Commendations to the 195 students, and I'm not going to read all those names, invited to Superintendent's Honors Night this week. Invited students are those graduating this spring who had a 4.0 or higher cumulative GPA at the end of last semester. These students represent the top 12% of this year's graduating class. Commendations to Dearborn High students who successfully competed at the MSVMA State Solo and Ensemble Festival on April 15th in Jackson and earned a first or second division ranking at the state level. Earning a first division in solo performances were several students from Dearborn High, and they all received perfect scores. All those names will be added to the permanent record here in the board meetings. Commendations as well to the DHS Women's Ensemble who earned a first division rating at the State Coral Festival at Albion College last week. Commendations for their accompanyingest, Sarah Jakubiak, and their director and teacher, Jennifer Poguski. Commendations to Dearborn High students who helped produce the monthly Pioneer Press for their success in the annual Michigan Interscholastic Press Association Awards Contest. The Pioneer Press took home 13 individual awards, including five first-place awards, two second-place awards, three third-place awards, and three honorable mentions. Commendations to 16 Etzel Ford High senior students who volunteered to assist with kindergarten roundup at three feeder elementary schools, Long, Nalan, and Salina. The students spent time playing games with the young incoming students and assisting staff and parents. This was a great opportunity for seniors to give back to schools that they had attended for elementary school. Thank you to staff member Summer Elmu Burak for organizing the event. Or organizing the students to attend. Commendations to members of the Dearborn High School Orphans Overseas Foundation and Bryant Middle School's National Junior Honor Society. The groups partnered and held a bake sale in April to support the earthquake victims in Syria and Turkey. Students at both schools raised more than $400. This money was donated to the International Federation of Red Cross and Red Crescent Societies and Doctors Without Borders. Commendations to Henry Ford Elementary GSRP teacher Jennifer Soratini and Renee Reed. The pair co-presented at the My AEC Annual Early Childhood Conference on April 22nd in Grand Rapids. They presented two sessions, one on knowledge of self and others, going beyond paper and pencil staff portraits, and the other was pairing picture books with STEAM. Thank you very much. Commendations to all of those.
One thing. Mr. Mustin, since the students were not able to be, to stay with us, please thank them for being in attendance. Trustee Petlicoff?
I just wanted to give a shout out to one of the students that was mentioned on here. Gus Shohedy was my tour guide at Fortson for the MASB, and he had a tough group because he also had a Wayne Reeser Board Member who happened to have been a Fortson teacher for, I think, more than 30 years, Jim Petrie. So, we knew the history of Fortson as he gave a tour to many school board members from other outlying cities, but he did a wonderful job and represented his class well.
Thank you much. Next item?
Next, acknowledgements of donations.
A donation of $457.76 has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for hands-on building sets. A donation of $1,312.50 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for MIPA Journalism Workshop. A donation of $395.00 has been offered to Duval, Howard, and Snow Elementary Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for speech and language materials for special education and social-emotional learning. A donation of $1,500 has been offered to Lori School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for 3D printers. A donation of $150 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for Legos. Donation of $508 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Education Foundation for Robotics. A donation of $3,500 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with LaFontaine to be used for driver's education. A donation of $3,500 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with UAW Local 600 to be used for driver's education. A donation of $500 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with Keller Williams to be used for driver's education. A donation of food has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Pizza Kitchen to be used for the seniors' dinner. A donation of food has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Ricky's Sub Shop, by Alano's Pizza and Subs, by Baba's Grill, by Iceberg, by Wingfellas, by LA Bistro, by Biblo's Banquet Center, and also by Rafik's Falafel, all to be used for the senior dinner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Watts had to step away. Remind me from that order, were we going to move to citizen participation at this point?
So, we're not...
We'll do approval of minutes after citizen participation. So, I will mention, I'll bring up the first card for Kathy Martin. Real, real quick, we forgot to mention the normal paragraph about citizen participation. Trustee Watts, can you do that one real quick?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, the change of order threw me.
Citizen participation, citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are assigned in by 7:00, 10:00 PM by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your minute, I'm sorry, please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Maleko, President Thorpe, and trustees. I'm here to address a problem that surrounding districts have seemed to solve by listening to educators, and that's the educator exodus. Last month, I actually wasn't able to be here because I was speaking to the Senate and House Appropriations Committee about recruitment and retention of teachers. While I was at that hearing, I started getting text messages from people who were here or from people watching at home, like, "Are you seeing this?" Many, many members were very upset by what they were seeing, letters being read by members, and people talking about leaving and coming back. They felt very disrespected. I later found out that some members had written these letters not knowing what they were going to be used for. This should be a cause for pause, a pause to wonder why letters from former resignees were collected and read aloud. If we've lost even one amazing teacher due to something we're doing wrong in this district, then that warrants our full attention. But first, I'd like to start with a little background. Dearborn is a very unique district. Although we're the third-largest in the state, our community functions more like a small town. People love this city, and they don't leave. We have a large number of staff who grow up here, graduate from our high schools, and come back to teach in the city they love. Over the past five years or so, we've seen a dramatic change. Community members who continue to live in Dearborn and whose children continue to attend Dearborn Schools have left. We can't say that these people are leaving to be closer to home. They are home. Many of these people aren't leaving for more money. Many amazing and knowledgeable educators are leaving for districts that will not burn them out. Two years ago, I was listening to a TED Talk, I love TED Talks, and the speaker was talking about burnout. Contrary to popular sentiment, burnout does not happen when we work hard. Burnout happens when we don't feel like we're making an impact. Burnout happens when you have to compromise what you know is right. Burnout happens when you have to compromise your morals and your ethics. The conditions that educators are expected to work under and the scrutiny that they have had to endure are burning them out at a record pace. Surrounding districts have come up with ways to keep that from happening. Surrounding districts are treating staff with respect and following their lead as they realize that educators are the professionals and they treat them as such. I wanted to end on a positive note. We're working with the district to negotiate a contract that solves deep-rooted issues in education. We aim to be the district that will model how to solve the teacher exodus once and for all. The good news is, we have lots of educators here today who are ready, who are working very hard, and they're helping us to craft a contract that can solve many of the issues we have here in DPS. Please help Dearborn become the district that is best for teacher recruitment and retention in the state, if not the nation.
Next, Kathleen McCormick, who is an employee, would like to come to speak to the board about STEAM.
A couple of STEAM teachers. We had more STEAM teachers here, but because of late hour, they had to leave, so there's only three of us left. But we want to stand together in support of the STEAM program and our wonderful coach, Kelly Sabasic. Prior to Kelly Sabasic being hired into the district, the STEAM teachers did not have PLC or PD at all. We fought very hard and kept asking the district for it. They gave to us if we did it ourselves, so we started it ourselves, and we ran it ourselves, and we shared all our great ideas. Now that Kelly's here with Ross's help, Ross Grover, they work as a team to support us so that we can be the best teachers possible for our students and raise those achievement levels. I want to comment on all the things that Kelly is asked to do, which she still says cheerful, but I think there needs to be more than just one STEAM coach. First of all, she organizes all our PLCs, and we call her the Carpoint Queen because she is very detailed and has a set agenda, but yes, she has flexibility to meet our needs and always asks us, "Is there something you want to add to the agenda, or should we take this off and table it?" That's showing respect for us as teachers and working as a team. The second thing that she does is she also chairs the Elementary Science Committee. She's been instrumental in training at least one elementary teacher at each school to be knowledgeable in the NGSAs standards and to have them go back to their schools and train the teachers at their school. That has been a huge commitment in addition to running, piloting the science programs this year. She was very instrumental in making sure that everybody had their questions asked, and she went to every school that was piloting and observed the teachers and asked if they needed anything to help them during the pilot program. That's still not all that she does. She is a member of this, she's one of the chairs of the STEAM Committee along with Ross, Amy Guiz, Bob Addy, and Bob Harrison. This is a new committee. It originally started a couple of years ago where it was just K through 12. It's now extended to pre-K through 12, and we've been working very hard all year on coming up with a five-year strategic plan for pre-K through 5. It's still a work in progress, but a lot, this is the first year I think we really have gotten everything down on paper, and I feel like something is going to happen because I know Ross has been fighting for this for a long time. Thank you, Ross. And I hope she gets to see it in place before she leaves because she's, I'm going to get emotional. So, Ross was one of my go-to people. I started...
The three minutes is up. I'm sorry. Did any of you have a, did any, yeah, did any of you have a card?
All right, so thank you. We just hope that the district provides support to all of our staff, like Ross and Kelly do to us, and that we can see changes to how stuff will fill in our district.
Thanks.
Next, Sarah Webley, from, an employee from Windup, would like to come to speak to the board about teacher shout-out.
Good evening, Dr. Maleko, I'm board. It is my pleasure to be here today. I want to start off by saying that I feel truly blessed to work with some of the most amazing group of educators. These teachers that are in this room, and these teachers specifically at the building I work at, at Stout Middle School, are some of the most creative, dedicated, passionate, and caring educators that I've ever worked with. If you take a walk through the halls of Stout or any building that's represented here tonight, I guarantee that you will see teachers interacting, smiling with their students, spending their lunchtime, giving up their prep times to help students with assignments, and build personal connections with students. You'll see seamless inclusion of special education students into the general education setting. Thanks to administrative support, of course, in those buildings, you'll also see creative artwork, you'll see writing projects, STEAM projects, and countless examples of exemplary student work in every single hallway that you walk through. The reason that you'll notice all of these things, as well as the countless other positives that I simply just don't have enough time to mention, is because of the amazing teachers that are working tirelessly to support our students. I want to also say as a side note, I have been a teacher at Stout for the last 10 years. I've been in the district for 13. I've had the privilege of working at Stout with the most amazing group of teachers, school nurses, today's School Nurse Day, paraprofessionals, and ancillary staff that are part of our MOSI program at Stout. So, I want to say specifically thank you to those teachers at Stout. However, the last thing I wanted to say is to all of my fellow teachers in the room and watching from home. I want to remind all of you that what you are doing truly makes a difference. I know that it doesn't always feel like that you're making a difference. I know the day-to-day grind, teaching parts of speech, filling out the never-ending stack of paperwork that we have, sometimes making a difference is the last thing that you feel like you're doing, but you are. You are building our future, one child, one day at a time. You spend more waking moments with the kids in your class than you do with your own parents, than they do with their own parents throughout the school year. Yes, you teach them academics, and you do it well, better than any other district I've seen, but you teach them so much more too. You teach them how to be kind, how to be caring human beings. You help develop their character and mold them into the people that they will become. Have no doubt that you play a major role in creating our future, and if that doesn't make a difference, I don't know what does. So, thank you. Thank you for your sacrifice of your personal and family time to grade papers, prepare lessons, and attend conferences. Thank you for all those extra goodies, those classroom supplies that you bought out of your own pocket to help your students succeed and have fun. You are making a difference, and your future and our future is forever grateful to you.
Thank you.
Next, Denise Tomlinson, an employee from Huntington Woods, would like to come to speak to the board about school nurses.
Good evening, Dr. Maleko and members of the board. I'm the teacher consultant for POHI and Assistive Technology in the district. And so, as Sarah mentioned, not only is it Teacher Appreciation Week, it's also appreciation for school nurses. And I know you know that we have nurses in our district, and they do everything that you would expect, like they take care of sick kids, they take temperatures, they try to treat minor injuries, but you may not know that there are some who also ride the bus with students from their homes to school and then home from school when it's over. They communicate with families every day, they communicate with doctors and outside therapists, they also do what seems like endless paperwork and trying to keep the information organized. They have caseloads of hundreds of kiddos because there's only a few nurses to go around in the whole district. And sometimes these amazing people, while they're doing all of these things, they will even, you know, email me and the special education team because they've noticed that there's a student who might be limping, or maybe there's someone who's come to their office multiple times who is complaining of fatigue or pain, and I just wanted to make sure that their selflessness and dedication to their craft is recognized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ellen Huss, employee from West Bloomfield, would like to come to speak to the board about staff appreciation. Ellen? Okay. Next, Stephanie Butler, a parent, would like to come to speak to the board about sexual education.
I know we're going to have our sex ed presentation pretty soon, but I wanted to just talk about a couple of points that I had, you know, going through that whole process, being on the board. And although I'm very happy with the decision that was made for now, going forward, I think that Dearborn is in a unique position to save itself a lot of money and maybe come up with our own, write our own sex ed curriculum because we have a special community here, and a lot of the things that was in the sex ed, the new stuff that was brought forward would shock you to the core. So, what I want to talk about is the comprehensive sexual education and kind of what that hides behind. While sex education is an important topic, it is essential to ensure that it is taught in a manner that is age-appropriate and respectful of family values and beliefs. Many comprehensive sexual ed programs fail to do so and can cause harm to children and families. Firstly, many of these programs are not suitable for young children and can be traumatizing. They may use graphic images and explicit language to describe sexual activity, which can be overwhelming for children who are not yet ready to understand such concepts. This can lead to confusion, anxiety, and even trauma. Secondly, these programs can promote risky sexual behaviors. They may encourage experimentation with different partners and forms of sexual activity, which can increase the risk of unintended consequences such as unwanted pregnancies, sexually transmitted diseases, and emotional harm. Lastly, these programs can undermine the role of parents in teaching their children about sex. Parents should have the primary responsibility of raising their children according to their own values and beliefs. However, some comprehensive sex ed programs may promote ideology that goes against the values and beliefs of many parents. This can lead to conflict between parents and schools and can erode the trust in education systems. In conclusion, we need to find a balance between providing accurate and age-appropriate information about sex and respecting the values and beliefs of parents and families. It is important to ensure that sex education is taught in a manner that is respectful of families and is not traumatizing for young children. We must work together to find a way to provide the right kind of sex ed that will help our children become responsible and healthy adults. I gave you guys all a little pamphlet, and it talks about, this was from 2019, but it talks about how comprehensive sex ed, which is what we all have, really is just a backdrop for how you can experiment with social change and social ideology, and it says so here. And lastly, most all the sex ed programs are funded by Planned Parenthood, who then go on to abortion work, so it's a money-making business. So, I suggest the board look at, you know, in the future, maybe coming up with their own curriculum that's designed specifically for our district.
The three minutes is up.
Going forward with that.
Thank you.
Next, Crystal Paulson, a parent, would like to come to speak to the board about special education.
So, last meeting, I had multiple mothers reach out to me with autistic mothers. And I don't know what you guys are doing or what the department is doing or the director's doing, but someone is undermining everything and children are being hurt. And just not any children, non-verbal children, children that cannot even say what happened, express all the fears of anything. Back in December 2020, when my son was given to the Special Education Department, he was diagnosed improperly by the Special Needs Department. I wasn't happy. I seeked elsewhere. And because I did, and I didn't give him to the Special Education Department, or the director, or the autism coordinator, my son is now verbal. He can now tell me what happened. He can tell me anything. He can carry on a conversation. His meltdowns don't happen that much because he can verbally tell us what is bothering. You guys think that we started on books, the sex ed, I'm just starting on the special ed department. Good luck, because I'm not going to stop till it's fixed. And I want to finish this note. I took my son out of Nalan, his second-grade teacher is actually here. The reason why I took him out is because of her, and he will never step foot back in Dearborn Public Schools. My youngest, that I thought he was going to be ready for kindergarten, January, thank God for Bright, which is an ABA center in Dearborn, the staff is beautiful there, he's now registered for kindergarten, and it's not Dearborn. And the reason why is because I'm not going to have my kids sexually indoctrinated by that.
Next, Amelia, a student would like to come to speak to the board about autism.
I don't think she's here.
Next, a parent, Rosa Agasso, would like to come to speak to the board about restraint children. children.
Thank you for having me. I was here last month. I told you guys about what was going on at the school. My daughter was being restrained. Now, I was told that, yeah, it was correct, she was being restrained, improper restraint at that. I still haven't got all the answers yet. I came to you guys for help to find out the answers. The only thing they told me that they had the para resign, okay? And they're not telling me, what are they doing to fix this problem? Why are these kids getting hurt? Why did we send them to school to get hurt? Ladies, you guys are mothers too. What are you guys doing for these kids? Speak up. We need mothers to speak up for our children. I know the special ed department, I don't know what's going on, he must be untouchable as well, because nothing, nobody's held accountable. Why is nobody held accountable for stuff like this? You know, do we want this in Dearborn? No. We want it to be peaceful. We want to bring our kids to school, a loving school. These kids deserve this. Not to be getting abused, because that's what you call it abuse. When you put your hands on a child that was not even be in danger or endanger anybody else, and there's a law in Michigan against that. You guys need to look it up. I don't know who's going to do anything about the special ed department. They should be held accountable. And that's all I'm saying. Peace and love, you guys. But I just said, you guys, I pray for you guys, because this is wrong. This is wrong. Somebody needs to do something. I do not want to come back up here again, because I'm still waiting. I emailed them today, I still haven't got a response back. What am I getting ignored? Because they feel like they're untouchable? That's wrong. You work for us. I'm a taxpayer and, and I want something done. You understand? Ladies, come on now. What are you doing for the children? Why are you guys up there taking up space? If not, you guys are mothers too. What are you guys doing? We're supposed to stick together and protect our children, please, for God's sake.
Thank you.
The remaining blue cards that I have, they did not want to speak to the board, but I have their comments. So that is the end of the in-person blue cards.
Okay.
So, so I'll just go through. Jill Erickson, she's an employee from Canton, she said, I don't want to speak to the board, but would like to make the following comments. We have very limited resources, support, but many of the teachers come together each and every day to support one another, and that's why I love McDonald Elementary. Next, first initial N, last name, I believe it's Bush, from Livonia, an employee. Thank you Kathy Martin for leading the DFT. Employee Katie Fournier would like, McDonald is a high need building and we do not have the support we need to meet the students' needs. We really need our ECS full-time. Next, a parent, no name, Dearborn, why, what is the outcome of the building condition at Lori? Next, employee, Haprit Janelle, apologies. Our staff and educators that watch over our children are doing a great job. I would like to express gratitude, thank you. Danielle McCary, an employee, kudos to my special ed staff who have had an incredibly challenging year, but still show up for the kids with a smile and work so hard every day. Lauren Trejo, from an employee, shout out to all of the House special ed teachers and Alyssa Coleman, employee, a big thank you and shout out to the amazing social workers at DHS and social worker at Salina Intermediate. Tracy Nichols, employee, in over 20 years of teaching, I am amazed by all of our teachers, that all our teachers give to their students, time, resources, funding, to enrich their students' education and grow them into successful individuals. Berlin Beaver, an employee, our staff in the district are given limited resources and still able to soar with these students. Staff members give extra all the time. Thank you for all, thank you all for going above and beyond. Community member, Maryam Abadi, Mrs., she named a teacher here. I can't say. Mrs. S, an impactful educator, leader. She loves the students, wears many hats, and does things not because she has to, but because she wants to.
Make sure that the teacher does get a copy of that.
An employee, Muramashra, I'd like to shout out to the kindergarten team at McCullough for the tireless work they do for our kiddos in supporting the high needs we are seeing in these classes. The rest of these have letters attached. Meredith Gifford, from an employee. Cheryl A. is one of the greatest teachers I've had the pleasure of working with. She says, quote, "I treat my students like I treat my own kids. High expectations, strict rules, but lots of love. I've seen it firsthand. Also, she is always willing to help another coworker out and does so without asking." Maria Luliano, an employee. After 24 years in the district, I have been so lucky to have worked with so many incredibly hardworking teachers. This year in particular has been challenging. However, this teacher who I co-teach with shows understanding and never allows students to slack. He is stern when he needs to be, but always shows respect and grace to all students that walk through his door. Kudos to Mr. R. for always putting students first every chance he gets. Next, Brad Neff, employee. All in uppercase, he is great, I'm talking about Mr. Neff, a former, that's from a former student. In the days of fake news and fake facts, some overlook the importance of libraries, even though most students fall in love with reading first, then learning. Next, Jennifer Waters, an employee. I'm new to the district, started in January 2023 and I work at Lori. I have the most supportive coworkers. They deserve kudos every day. From little things like moving middle schoolers through the hallway each day, advising on the day, advising on the day-to-day, to the big things like lesson planning, speaking to parents for, for me who don't speak English, I don't speak Arabic, or supporting behavior issues. I always have met wonderful new colleagues at other buildings during solution tree sessions. I am so how, help, excuse me, I am so happy to be a member of DFT. I couldn't ask for better coworkers and they deserve wonderful working conditions and benefits so they can continue the very hard work they do each and every day for the kids and families in Dearborn. Employee Beth Rona. Hello, I'm a Special Education Department Chair at Dearborn High and would like to give a shout out to the entire special ed team at my building. For the past two years, we've been dealing with an unfilled resource teacher position and the special education team has gone above and beyond to ensure that our students are getting the services they need. Taking an extra work, taking on extra work in addition to their many regular duties has been difficult and the DHS resource teachers should be recognized for their efforts. Our staff does an amazing job meeting the diverse needs of our special education population students and they deserve kudos as well. Lastly, but not certainly least, the parapros at DHS have done an incredible job of supporting our most vulnerable students. They have also had the burden of multiple open positions over the past few years and shown great flexibility and compassion. The DHS parapros deserve many thanks for the effort, extra effort they give on a daily Next, Sylvia Otham, an employee. I'd like to recognize the excellent work of the Eunice Middle Schools Counseling and Social Work Team, Amy T., Yasmin M., and Emily B. This has been a tiring year and as we all work ourselves back into the post-pandemic normal. The three of them have been swamped trying to meet the social, emotional, and academic needs of our students. Even when it's tough, they come in with smiles on their faces and do their absolute best to meet kids where they are and help them work through their challenges. And it's been an honor to work alongside all of them. Adam Smith, an employee from Islanty. Hello, I'm not able to attend tonight's school board meeting, so I am sending along a kudos to print and have read. There's a lot, there's a lot about being a first-year teacher that feels like being thrown into the deep end without floaties on, but I have been so grateful to have the incredible teachers on my PLC there to catch me. Whenever teaching has felt tough or I felt frustrated, my PLC has been there to support me. These teachers that I work with put an endless amount of work into making sure our students receive the best education they can get, the type of education they deserve. And that hard work often goes unrecognized because those on the outside don't see the hours and hours we spend writing and grading assessments that help students learn, writing feedback for students that allow them to grow, and developing curriculum that challenges and engages our, our students. I've heard so many stories of first-year teachers burning out just as quickly as they enter the profession, and I truly believe that I have my amazing PLC colleagues to thank for keeping me sane and excited to keep teaching. Sarah Jabber, an employee. Mrs. V. at Dearborn, Dearborn High School. Your dedication and innovative teaching approach has not gone unnoticed, and I'm truly inspired by the way you incorporate social, emotional learning and culture into your math lessons. Your commitment to understanding and connecting with your students on a deeper level is truly commendable. By recognizing the importance of social, emotional well-being, you create a safe and supportive classroom environment where students feel seen, heard, and valued. It's amazing to see how you foster a sense of belonging and create opportunities for students to express themselves authentically. Moreover, your incorporation of diverse cultural perspectives into math lessons is a brilliant way to make the subject relatable and relevant to your students' lives. Your approach not only enhances students' mathematical understanding, but also keeps them with essential life skills. Thank you for being such an amazing educator. Christina Robbins, an employee. Kudos to Steven S., German teacher. This German teacher has been so helpful sharing his material and teaching expertise. This teacher makes learning fun with a lot of energy, positive feedback, and laughter to make German fun. We are so lucky to have this teacher as part of our staff. Next, a former student and community member, Howd Maha. To the board, Dearborn Public School staff and community, I would like to give a huge shout out to Mrs. M. for guiding me through the scope of the classroom and continuing to be a great friend, mentor, and educator. Thank you. Evdami Mashra, former student and community member. To the board, oh, she has multiple. I'm sorry, he, he has multiple.
As long as it's within three minutes.
Yes. To the board, Dearborn Public School staff and community, I would like a huge shout out to Coach Hassan B., my favorite track and field coach and gym teacher in, in high school. His guidance during my commencement into college and advice that he continues to provide to this day is bar none. The relationship we maintain has been pivotal to my current success and for my aspiration of being a physician. He is the type of coach and educator I hope every student athlete can encounter at some point during their, this journey. And he has one more. A huge shout out to Mrs. Angela S., my former fifth-grade teacher, who I'm still, who I still keep in touch with until this day. She went above and beyond to let all her students know that they are capable of achieving any goal they set for themselves. She is an embodiment of what every educator should be inside and outside of the classroom. Her dedication to our students and their lives is undeniable and can't thank her enough for impact on my life. Next, from a parent and community member, Um Yas. I would like to give a huge shout out to Mrs. Maryam A. McCullough. Over the years, Mrs. A. has worked diligently with her students as an ESL teacher. She makes sure that learning is fun and not always serious. She builds connections and relationships with students and families that last a long time. Not only does she take on this role with grace, she also manages all of the testing that needs to be scheduled at the building, be it M-Step and WEA, WIDE, et cetera. She makes it super easy for us to know who is doing what and on what day. She also coordinates with us so that we are not burnt out during these long weeks of testing. We are blessed to have you in our school. The same person. The same person would also like to continue and give a shout out to Mrs. Ayani B/ S. Mrs. S. is an ESL resource teacher. She works extremely hard with our kids to make sure that they are understanding content while learning English. She goes out of her way to support her team in any way that she can. She communicates with parents and advocates for students whenever they are in need. Not only is she amazing at her job, but she makes sure she builds relationships that last with the students and families. She is a huge asset to our building and our community. Three cheers from Mrs. S. We hope you know how much we appreciate you. Ashmahan Mashra, parent and community member. I would love to give a huge shout out to Mrs. Laura B. from McCullough, from McCullough Elementary, our extremely talented art teacher. Mrs. B. is passionate, dedicated, caring, and devoted. And over the years, I've had the pleasure of knowing Mrs. B. first through my siblings as they have had her as an art teacher, my own children who have had her as an art teacher, and then through working with her as a colleague. Mrs. B. goes out of her way to make sure that her students are engaged and excited in the art they create. To date, art is one of my kids' favorite classes, and when I speak to my siblings who have now graduated and moved on to graduate degrees, they still speak fondly about all the fun they had in art, as well as how much they appreciated Mrs. B.'s kindness. I've been at McCullough for eight years, and over the eight years, Mrs. B. did not hesitate when I had an idea that incorporated art into course subjects. She made 2D robots that have moved to show the different types of energy. She has painted pumpkins into globes and charted the Colombian exchange with yarn. And she has made 3D human body that shows the different human body systems we were learning about each week. The skeleton still hangs in the classroom. She has went out of her way to make lanterns to decorate for Eid, Ramadan with our students, as well has made personalized carts for various events in our building. Mrs. B. deserves all the recognition in the world, and although this is a shout out, I hope she knows how many lives she has impacted over the years in a magnificent, magnificent way. We have three remaining. Parent and communicate, I'm sorry, parent and community member, Um Zakaria. Multiple shout outs. Shout out to Mrs. S., who was an amazing fifth-grade teacher this past year for my son. She went above and beyond ensuring he met his goals for the year, stayed on task, and had fun. Shout out to Mrs. A., first grade. She is so kind, caring, and generous. She puts her all in the work she does, and her students absolutely adore her. She teaches in a way that is down-to-earth, fun, and engaging for her students. Shout out to Mrs. A., third through fifth. My niece will not stop praising her for the amazing work she does. She is kind, caring, and goes above and beyond for her students. Shout out to the OG, Mrs. K. She was our all-time favorite teacher among all siblings, and we have a big family. Mrs. K. would always put her students first, ensuring they understood the material and have fun while doing so. She allows students to explore their creativity when submitting assignments and makes learning, global studies interesting and fun. My son, who is also her student, absolutely loves her teaching style and looks forward to her classes each day. Shout out to the other OG, Mr. D. Mr. D. is one of the best teachers at Eunice since its inception. He puts his students first, making learning engaging and fun, and supports his student to ensure they succeed. He truly cares for his students, and it shows through his passion for teaching of all of these years. And last shout out to Mrs. M., fourth grade. She goes out of her way to bring her students rewards to continue to motivate them each month. She makes learning engaging and fun for her students, often singing math operations to help them remember their exams. Renee Harrison, employee from Lincoln Park. She's representing herself, a Dearborn teacher in Woodworth Middle School. I would like to give my heartfelt thanks to my co-teacher, Zaina S. In our building, we have several vacancies, and the official teaching position that mirrors mine has only recently been filled. Typically, it's been falling on the certified teachers on the team to come up with lesson plans for long-term subs or whoever is filling the position, while we tirelessly search for teachers, which means that we are doing considerably more work to compensate for the vacancy. I'm so thankful to Zaina, who cares so much about her students and ensures daily that her students are given the same opportunities that my students have. She has fully immersed herself in my content area and is learning how to deliver the curriculum with fidelity, even knowing she could be moved in another position anytime. To say that has been, to say that it has completely disrupted her life to do this is an understatement, but she comes to work with a full heart and a smile every single day and works her hardest to make sure our students are not experiencing a disadvantage. She has done an amazing job removing the weight from my shoulders as well, as we work collaboratively in our PLC team. I do not feel the same burden I would feel with any other person covering the position on a temporary basis because she works extra hard to remove that by going above and beyond in her position. Thank you, Zaina. For all your dedication and care, I know the students feel it, and I want you, want you to know that we all appreciate you so much. I would also like to thank the union representatives in our building for rallying each week to encourage and inspire and motivate our teaching staff to accommodate for themselves, I'm sorry, to advocate for themselves, each other, our students, our profession, and our community. They do such a great job, and I look forward to seeing these positive influences help shape the upcoming contract negotiations. Thank you. The last one, Melanie Klein, an employee from Canton. Several shout outs. She would like to acknowledge the following DFT members for going above and beyond on a daily basis. She would like to acknowledge the following DFT members for going above and beyond on a daily basis to support students, parents, and the Woodworth community. Abdullah A. Abdullah goes beyond the hours and requirements of a coach. He spends his personal time, including weekends, to serve as a mentor for our students and parents as well. He instills character in our students with love and care. Salwa M. Salwa is invaluable and contributing to our school's positive culture and climate. She's invested her own time during the summer months to strengthen positive parent partnerships and to increase parent involvement in the school. For example, she planned our parent education meetings and our first iftar dinner. In addition, she invited community members to volunteer as motivational speakers for our student. Zaina S. Zaina began the school year as a research, as a resource teacher, and mid-year stepped into a vacant eighth-grade science position. She arrives at the school early and stays late to support students on a regular basis. And in addition, she volunteers her time to plan parent education activities. And last, Jody T. Jody is a priceless asset to our school. She supports students and staff often by offering her knowledge to, to strength, to strengthen the MTSS process, and she gives off, she gives of her personal time to establish the RTI process.
We'll give you a second.
I appreciate that.
Didn't have a drink. There was many, many comments made of appreciation from, call one teacher to another teacher or staff member. So Dr. Maleko, could we please make sure that the teachers get copies of it so they can know the recognition that they are receiving? Additional questions or comments from trustees before we move on to the next action item? One thing that I'll bring up briefly, one of the comments was about Lori. Can you give updates as to what's going on with the building?
Yeah, and I actually went out there last week. We had an update. Mark Andrews and Mr. Madison ski and Sean Donahue have been out there, and I, we met with the principal. So they're happy with some of the progress that's been made. Ultimately, just like a lot of our other buildings, there's gonna be a bigger question that we're gonna need to ask, which will be next Monday. But as far as the stuff that they're able to take care of, you know, we went in the auditorium, we walked around, we toured, and there's a lot of, they did, they had actually had it scheduled during spring break because obviously they can get more work done. So it was actually pre-scheduled prior to even, you know, hearing from the board meeting. They had some work that was scheduled, but I think they added some additional items when, when we went out there. So I think there's been good progress out there.
Okay. Any additional items from the board before we move to the next item?